Roger needs to be in. We'll call five o'clock, we'll call a common council meeting for the first month, first one in November. And have the pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic of British Commons. Mission.
Under God.
Indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Hey, what do we do with our calls?
Wilkinson.
Here.
Ben Summerin.
Parks.
Here.
Blaircom. Elkin.
Okay, we've been calling for it. And then if you approve the printed agenda.
A commission to adopt the agenda as printed.
All which has been made and seconded to approve the agenda as printed, all in favor say aye. Posed, sorted, and then the consent agenda items. I don't need to read them all, I don't think. Alright, you can see what we got from October first till August eighteenth and all kinds of.
I move to approve the consent from the items. For the city council minutes, October first, October fifteenth, Arts Parks and Recreation Committee, October, August eighteenth, Finance Committee, October fourteenth, Fire Committee, February ten, Public Safety Committee, Land Commission, Recycling Committee, Tourism Commission, and Ordinance nineteen dash twenty twenty-five, Creating Chapter two ninety-four of the City of Amory Code of Ordinances Regulating Mobile Food Establishments.
I'll second that motion.
Motion's made seconded to approve consent agenda items, as previously listed. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
I opposed, sorted. Item number one, public comment. It's your nickel, folks. There you go, public comment, we'll close that and go to department heads. And let's do, uh, go backwards today, Mahoney. And I don't mean you're going backwards, I just mean you can start first.
Good evening, everyone. Crew's been out, water mains flushed, hydrants are flushed and winterized, so everything's good there. Uh, we got all the water and sewer digs we've been digging around town, got them all patched up, everything's cleaned up there, Arlington's paved. Got a little bit of rework on that that we're gonna do. Uh, got the new Culver Bridge Street. They made a nice loom that goes down and cleans up, so that, that really turned out well, that'll take care of that. Bruder's much happier, or DeCosmo, sorry. Uh, street fooper's been all over, trying to get the leaves, keep everything clean. City center, we've a couple issues here, just nothing major, just heat and ventilating, going through all the filters, Ross had to switch out a couple sub pumps. Nothing too bad, uh, lot of time at the wastewater treatment plant, I think that's, or she's gonna zoom in, so we'll still talk about that. What else we got? Oh, we had electronic recycling, of course, on the twenty-third. We had four water and sewer main digs this week, or last two weeks. Couple of them were houses that, even in the new sunflower development by the shop, they sold one lot that didn't have water and sewer tied to it. So, got everybody happy and everything seems to be going good, any questions?
About the item we talked about as far as.
We wait on that till we find out.
Okay.
Could I comment a little bit on the electronics recycling? It did great, we got the numbers, we just had a recycling committee meeting this week. We had two hundred and thirty-two vehicles come through with drop-offs. As you know, some small, some quite large, um, in St. Croix Falls, I believe it was three hundred and sixty, is that correct? Oh, I think it was a great event, once again, so.
Very successful.
Yeah.
Yeah, so, thank you very much for coordinating all of that.
Possibly that in spring again?
We're looking at doing it in the fall because we coordinate ours, uh, to be around the same time that the county holds theirs. And, uh, kind of do those a little bit in conjunction. So, we're looking at next fall, that we would do it then, don't have a date set yet, but.
Okay.
October again, though.
Yeah.
Okay, Taylor.
He's just gonna pick.
She done that to us, she went all that, right?
Alright, in October zoning requests began to slow down with the onset of the colder weather, but I was able to approve, um, the first single-family zoning permit for the new Sundance Place development. They already had a duplex going, and now they're gonna start on a single-family home as well. Utility bills were sent out on, in October, and they are due back on November fifteenth. Notices were also sent out to anybody that had an outstanding balance as of September thirtieth. If those balances are not paid before November fifteenth, they will get put on the tax roll with an additional ten percent penalty, so everybody's, please pay your utility bills. If you're currently signed up for automatic payments on your utility bill and, um, you've experienced a financial institution changeover in the month of October, please make sure that you update your account information with the city so that your utility bill goes through correctly. Um, and anybody in the public that's not signed up for automatic payments can do so through City Hall as well as email bills. And then, um, in conjunction, not only does Amory do the electronic recycling with Pol County, but the light bin for Christmas lights has been dropped off at the library already in the vestibule on the north end of the building. So, anybody that has Christmas lights that they need to recycle, they can drop them off in the bin, um, throughout the holiday season. And then, although we did not have an election yesterday, despite we did have some people come in looking for one, because most of, many parts of the country did, we actually will start in on the election process as of December first. Um, candidates will be able to pick up their paperwork and start circulating it in December for the three vacant coun- or the three council seats that'll be up on the ballot next April, as well as the mayor's position. So, a notice will go out in the end of November of those specific seats. Um, and then candidacy paperwork can begin to be circulated on December first, and you can pick up that at City Hall. And then, um, as we are in the midst of budget season, our budget notice has been published in last week's copy of the Amory Free Press. It's available out on our website and hung up in public places around the building. So, if anybody has any budget questions or wanna look further into the budget, they can stop at City Hall before the budget hearing, otherwise the budget hearing will be on November nineteenth. Any questions?
Thank you, Taylor.
Covered it well.
Director. This is all fun and what they have at this thing, yeah.
Good evening, everyone. Um, Emma and I completed our mural project, I know the library board got to see it a few weeks ago. It is on the stucco wall that you can see from the children's picture book area. This big, bright, beautiful mural, we're trying to make that whole children's garden a little more interesting to view. Uh, so we're really excited about that, that's one project down. I hosted the Historical Society's Cemetery Tour in early October. We had about thirty attendees, so it was really well received. Uh, members of the Apple River Arts Guild volunteered, and they dressed in period costume, and they read graveyard poetry. It was really fun, they did a great job, so thank you to them for helping us. Uh, the Community Club Trick or Treat Event was on the twenty-fifth. Crowds were a little bit lighter than the previous year, but we gave away around two hundred and eighty books, I don't have an exact number yet, compared to around five hundred last year. So, quite a difference, I know it was a little rainy, a little chilly, I don't know if that had anything to do with it, or if it was the date, it was before Halloween. But we had a good crowd, and everybody got to leave with a book, so I'm happy. Uh, Emma and I also participated that same day in the school district's Enchanted Story Walk. And that was a lot of fun, there were about three hundred people that went through there, there were stations with cauldrons or fire pits, and different members of the community read, I know a fire department member read, I know someone from the police department read. Uh, we had a school librarian there, I was there, Emma was there, so that was a really great time, it was really well received by the community, it was open to anybody, it wasn't just students of the school district. Uh, and then finally, a little bit of not great news, Lori has had to step away from the adult services position. So, she can't work full-time right now, she's stepping back and cutting her hours down, so she will come back to us when she can and work part-time on the desk, she's wonderful, and we want her in any way we can get her. Um, but that meant that we had a vacancy, and the good news is, is I've made an offer, and it's been accepted by a new person, and hopefully I can introduce that person in December, I think that's when they'll start. So, it's been a, a little bit of a funny year without adult services people for a while, but we're hanging on. Any questions?
Quite impressed with the school luck.
Great, yes, they did a great job, it was a lot of fun.
They had a good time.
Buddy enjoyed it. Thanks, everyone.
Thank you. Chief. Just be careful what you say, cause he's after you, no?
Alright, good evening, everybody, so, on October ninth, uh, we met with George Chang from, uh, Code for AI, the Report Writing System. He actually flew in from San Francisco to our office, came for a two-hour meeting with the guys. Um, so, so far, we are in the trial, trial period with that system, and it's working fabulously. Um, can't tell you how much time it saved, but I will guarantee you it's saved some time, and we're actually getting a lot more reports turned in on a timely manner, that I don't have to keep on the guys about, um. Works really well, um, I would say, just from what I've experienced for the reports that I've done, um, something that probably would have taken me an hour to write, I can do in less than fifteen minutes. So, a lot of it is just making corrections or checking the, the material, but it, it does save quite a bit of time, so. Um, October twenty-second, uh, Officer Cromery, Rachel, Bethany, and myself sat through the Wisconsin Track Program Training. Uh, they're doing some updates, that's our citations, OWI paperwork. Um, they've added, uh, search warrant data, um, and a bunch of other stuff, um. So, we sat through that on the twenty-second, October twenty-fifth, which Heather already said, we did the trick-or-treating, um. Sergeant Harris, Officer Presley, Bethany, and myself handed out, I think, eight great big bags of candy, so we had a pretty good turnout. Um, that same day, myself and Paw Patrol Officer Stanton did the Enchanted Trails Spooky Edition story reading, and it was a lot of fun, but we didn't get a fire pit, so it was a little chilly where we were, but it was a really good event, a lot of people came through.
How one?
Yeah, we.
But then.
We were good enough to let everybody else have the heat, so, um. Uh, Officer Mahoney currently is at the Internet Crimes Against Children Training in Appleton, uh, which is gonna be really good for us, cause we didn't have an ICAC officer before, and a lot of that stuff was coming through me, which eventually got rerouted to the county, so now we'll be able to deal with a lot more of those crimes here at the office, because there getting to be more and more of them, and that'll take some of the burden from the county, and we can handle a lot of them ourselves then. Just a reminder, winter parking went into effect November first to April fifteenth, and that's from twelve AM to six AM. And then, on a last note, um, one of our officers came to me. Um, he was gonna resign, I spoke with him, um, he's gonna stay on for a part-time basis. Uh, some family matters have come up, um, he's hoping to have stuff hopefully figured out between April and June, and then come back full-time, so. I didn't want to lose him with all of his training and stuff, so, um, so he's gonna stay on part-time, so. I think it'll work out for him, and it'll work out for us, it'll also save the city a good chunk of money by him going to part-time, so. Any questions?
Nope.
Thanks, Chief.
You're in, thank you.
Very thorough, no.
That's a done pretty well, as far as giving away candy, I think, at our house, we, we've always been open on, you know, thing, on, uh, Halloween, and, uh, we had thirteen people come, as compared with usually seventy to eighty, sometimes up as far as a hundred, hundred and twenty, but, uh. Yeah.
The numbers were down compared to last year, but there is still.
Yeah, yeah, a lot of people, Charles.
Evening. Um, I handed members the, it's three-year tally of all our calls, um. The total fire calls and the average minutes of a response time, again, like I said, response time is page time we get to the time. Um, for the last three years, um. So, if you look at the average response times on all of them, uh, for being a volunteer department, I think those are pretty darn good. So, um, Alex wants me to have this report, and he also wants me to add a few other things to what, as far as townships, what specific calls they were in that township, as far as maybe a structured fire, car accidents, um. Another big one is nine seven seven, um, lift assist and stuff like that, so. I'll be putting more of that information out, and he wants this report done every two months, so. We did adjust our run sheets and added more information to it, so it's easier for me to tally. Um, so that has been already being implemented so far, so. Um, take a look at it, if you have any questions, um, please let me know, and if I can answer them, I'll be happy to. Um, airboat is fixed, um, Joe Satchery took Wheeler Racing for a ride, Wheeler Racing now is in, uh, um, Zimmerman, Minnesota. Um, they, they're the ones that did all the, the work for, as far as the fuel and, uh, the pump and putting it in the tank. Um, uh, just because, uh, okay, he took three, took them out on the, in a, in a field, a grass field, up and down hills, because grass actually gives you more restriction, we actually have more horsepower. And where you're on water, you're going at a pretty good clip at pretty much an idle speed. So, they took them out on the grass, and the fuel tech that they have hooked their computer system into the onboard computer system um, on the boat, and everything, he picked everything, and everything ran the way it should, the fuel pressure and everything was there, all the numbers were perfect, and everything was really good. Um, uh, everything ran great, and the fuel pressure is where they should be, uh, they said all the fuel lines were wrong, and they replaced them all. Um, and then they put the, the pump in the tank, like I had said. Um, one comment that, uh, Jeff, the owner of Wheeler, said he thought race car drivers were crazy until he seen a firefighter in an airboat going across land. Oh, but, um, the guy, they, they really went through the airboat thoroughly, and, um, and Joe said it's got more power than it's ever had, it runs really smooth. One thing they did say is no more avgas, because it's too much octane, make sure you run just premium, if we can, I don't know if we have anybody in town who runs non-oxygenated fuel. Your trip has non-oxygenated, so we'll have to go there and, and get the, get their fuel from there, but, yeah. Ninety-one premium is what they want, non, um, or they want, uh, non-ethanol. Uh, any questions on it?
Taken it across water yet?
Not yet.
Okay.
Not yet, but it will be out, you're gonna need, and when the ice starts getting across the, the, the soft water, yeah, you'll, you'll be, um, things on Facebook, again, all the Amory Icebreakers are out, but.
Okay.
They gotta, they gotta transition from soft water to hard water.
Yeah.
It is something that you need to know, because you can sink that thing, so, because there is no flotation in it.
Yeah.
You fill it with water, you're gonna go to the bottom. So, um, yeah, so it will be out if we're, if we're snow flying, so. Um, Fire Safety Day went great, um, from what I understand, it was a good turnout, it was only, I wasn't able to make it, it was three days after my surgery. But, um, they said the turnout was really good, uh, which was really good to hear. Um, Erica, um, represented the fire department in the enchanted spooky forest, and she said she had a blast. Um, she said the turnout was amazing, like Heather had said, she was at least over three hundred people were there, and she said she really hopes that they do it again next year, so, it was, impressed her, so. Um, Erica and my wife Tammy got dressed up in their Halloween costumes and handed candy out at the fire station. It was around the twenty-fifth, I do believe it was, and, uh, yeah, they ran out of candy. But we actually had to have, or we happened to have some fire prevention suckers in the back. Now them are gone, sorry. Sorry for city car, the, yeah. Ladies and, uh, and Alex in the office, that, we won't be getting any more suckers in there from the. So, um, so, yeah, so that was a good day for them. Um, I know it's a month early, but I just wanted to put it out there, uh, December sixth, four to sevens are Andrew Chili Feed. So, I will be bringing it up again, first part of December, that meeting too, so. Other than that, it's all again.
That's good.
Thanks, Chuck.
Chuck.
Stay the best for last.
I'll be brief.
To the spots.
Because Chuck didn't mention it, um, for Thanksgiving, please exercise the most amount of degree of caution when you are frying a turkey. Do so on a flat level surface and away from any structures, with a fire extinguisher on hand, that is not water.
It's a, and a thawed turkey.
Turkey, no, not for a, yes, sir. Um, so I got only a couple of things here, one, last week I was able to attend the International City County Managers Association's Conference in Tampa. Uh, this was a lovely time, and not just for the weather or the beauty of the city of Tampa, but it was a great chance to learn, talk with folks who I haven't seen in years, get some mentoring coaching, and kind of understand people who have been in my position for decades about some of the challenges, opportunities, and situations we have in Amory, and how to better handle those situations moving forward. So, a wonderful opportunity to attend down at Tampa. Um, tomorrow, a group of me and four other people are putting in a speaking application to present at next year's conference, so it was hoping we can talk about, uh, some of the things that are going on in small cities, where you don't have money and staff out the wazoo, um, to try and represent the smaller communities on a larger scale, so, look, uh, very happy to be able to attend that conference. In December, the first week of December will be project kickoff for the new amorywi.gov website. Um, as part of our contract, we have a regular website redesign built in, and time's up, so gonna get the website, uh, much-needed facelift. Um, a couple of the things that we're looking to promote more heavily are a proper customer relationship management system, or CRM. This is a fancy way to track resident concerns, complaints, questions, and ensure that they are being routed to appropriately and responded to in an appropriate amount of time, as well as trying to digitize all of our forms, there is no good reason in twenty twenty-five why you can't submit a zoning request online, and you need to do that pen and paper, of course, pen and paper will always be an option, uh, but we're hoping to expand those capabilities in our website, and make it a little easier to navigate if you're looking for a specific piece of information, or to contact a, uh, specific department about a specific concern. So, we got that going, that'll probably be a two-to-three-month project, starting in the beginning of December. Um, I guess that's about it, um, yeah, any questions?
Well, thanks, Alex.
Thank you.
Alright, item number three, pay application fifty for the WTP.
Are you talking to me? I, I'm so sorry, hi, I'm Kate, I don't, I have not attended a meeting yet, so it's nice to meet all of you, uh, virtually. Uh, what can I tell you about the pay application, I guess, I haven't been through this before with you guys?
I'm gonna, just a quick summary about the work completed to date, and the amount that the pay app is for.
The amount of the pay up is for, for the month of, this is for September, uh, six hundred and fifty-six thousand, three hundred and eleven dollars and twenty-one cents. Um, a quick overview of what this pay app covers in terms of the work done in September. Looks like we have some demolition of existing structures, we have concrete foundation for treatment building ten. There are some funds spent on concrete foundation for something building twenty as well. Had some plumbing, building labor for building ten, uh, some HVAC work was done as well. And electrical for buildings ten and fifteen, and for building fifty, which is, there's a lot of work being done on building fifty right now, the remodeling, particularly, there's a lot of masonry and roofing happening right now, uh, which is not necessarily reflected in this pay up that we're reviewing, as this is really more for the month of October in particular. Uh, getting back to the pay up more specifically, uh, site demolition was a pretty good chunk of this uh, pay application, as well as site grading, um, both labor, equipment, and materials. There was excavation and backfill done for building twenty. Some other notable ones would be equipment installation, that's a pretty general topic, um, monrails, hoists, trolleys, and dabit cranes. And there's some items from different, from different change orders that we've had. Uh, particularly looks like a lot from change order two, a lot of work from change order two. What more can I tell you all about this pay application?
It's a percentage of completion.
Sorry, what is that?
I think the percentage of completion of the project is.
I'd say around seventy-five to eighty, I think is where we're sitting right now, that's my, I feel like that's kind of based on different things, based on what I hear from Bridget, right, she's out there every day, she's really my eyes and ears at the site, I communicate with her a lot. Um, and Caleb as well, he sits in our, now you guys know, he sits in our headquarters up in St. Paul. Uh, so he is out there on occasion if Bridget's unable to be there, uh. And based on certainly pay applications that are coming through.
SPRs both up and running, we just had training today, cause they've got all the probes in, the SPR is now, so it measures the DO, the pH, or the phosphorus, the mixed liquor and all that will be measured, and it, they just got another computer hauled into the shop, so everything's this whole system will run on computers now. But it's gonna be, it is quite the system, and it is coming along nice, but there's, there's work to do, yeah.
Are there any rings out yet? They're on.
Can tell they're there, the little bridge that was on the back end of it, that's all torn down and out of there, a lot of the demo.
So, what do you think's left?
Well, they gotta redo the whole building, gotta get all the de-watering running, and for, next thing, hopefully, it will go, would be to get the de-watering running, so we can split hole in so many loads to Bellsworth, but we're not thickening it right now. Jeremy's trying to recirculate it to thicken it more, but yeah, the de-watering's the next big thing to come along.
Good. Questions? Otherwise, we'll entertain a motion.
Shouldn't that be approved then? So, six hundred and fifty-six thousand, three eleven and twenty cents.
Second that?
Motion's made seconded to approve pay application fifteen for the WTP. Six hundred and fifty-six thousand, three hundred and eleven dollars and twenty-one cents. All in favor by roll call?
Yes.
Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously. Item number four, MSA update on current projects. You're still with us.
Yep. Good evening, council. Um, speaking of, this is my last week before maternity leave, so this will be, uh, my last project update for a while here. So I brought Drew with me, who will be taking over as client lays on. Um, while I'm out, I promised you all I would try my best not to bring another Eric. Because although we love, love our Eric's, I think we have four MSA Eric's, a councilman Eric and another Eric, so.
She no problem.
All good things. But, um, yeah, Drew has met with myself and Alex and we've gone all over all the projects, so um, you'll be seeing a little bit more of him and I think you're in good hands. Drew happens to be my, my personal engineer and also better half, so. With that, I'll get into the project update. So, um, Hillcrest Drive sidewalk design. Um, we're kind of waiting on the real estate acquisition portion of that before we're finalizing design. We did get the, um, design scoping report and transportation management plan signed and finalized. Um, so now we're coordinating to make sure, um, we have everything and identifying any conflicts or so, um, we're supposed to hear back by the twenty second. So once those things are identified, we'll make any updates to the, the plan. And from this point forward, um, once that's done, we'll be waiting on acquisition. And the next big step is a ninety percent design, which is, uh, planned for June of two thousand and twenty six. So real estate should carry on this winter and that's obviously like process that has to be gone through with the federal requirements because there is DOT funding on this project. Um, so um, hopefully those things. Um, Sundance Place bidding in construction, that project's pretty much complete. You heard Taylor give an update that they're moving along forward with homes, um, which is great. Project walkthrough was done on the twentieth to identify any last punch list items. Um, according to the contractor's schedule, the project manager said that those things should have been addressed, um, prior to this meeting. So, um, hopefully that has been done. We haven't received a final pay application yet. I'm expecting that you should see one of those either at your November meeting or December meeting. Center Street Extension, um, your permit was approved for that, um, mid-September and we had sent the final plan set over to the city. So from this point on that project, um, we'll just be waiting to hear from the city when you're ready for us to come out for any um, as needed inspection to assist with that, um, project. CDBG Planning Administration, so this was for your comprehensive plan update and your outdoor rec plan. That was the grant that you received. Um, I worked to try to get everything done and ready before the end of this week. So that was all sent over to Taylor and approved. So after tonight's meeting, if both those plans are approved, I will get everything project closeout wise and your final disbursement sent off to the state for reimbursement. Um, and so your final last disbursement is a little over thirteen thousand dollars. Um, and just as a reminder, the grant for that was a total of forty five thousand, three hundred and thirty three dollars. So that was your grant total of the sixty seven, which of, which of the total project costs. So once that'll get closed out, there's a few more little things that you have to do in January, like a single audit statement. But, um, you obviously didn't go over a million dollars of federal funds for this project, so that should be a pretty quick and easy done thing. So that project should get closed out then, um, in the next month or so. Comprehensive plan update, I won't go too much into detail because I see that Alex has a few memos on this, but you, the plan commission recommended approval um, for the comprehensive plan at the October twenty third regular meeting, um, following that thirty day comment period, so. Any questions on updates on projects we've got going on?
Chair is sinking again. Sometimes I'm taller than you, sometimes I'm shorter than you.
I know. And it doesn't bother me either way. Item number five, ordinance twenty twenty five and ordinance to update and adopt the twenty forty five comprehensive plan of the city of Amory, Polk County, Wisconsin.
Feels like we just run a marathon, but here we are, the comprehensive plan envisioning the city of Amory over the next twenty years is ready for adoption. As Kiana said, the plan was approved via, or is recommended for approval by the Plan Commission at their twenty third October meeting, um, and now it's just ready for council review. This plan incorporates, um, hundreds of responses from members of the public, multiple chances for the public to provide their input at in person and online. It really is a culmination of a lot of nine months of work from city staff and MSA, especially Emily there, um, as well as whole lot of writing and, um, conversation and dialogue. We really want to focus on Amory's preserv- preservation of Amory's character and feel that small town um, mentality while also addressing the largest concerns that the community has, i.e. a lack of affordable attainable housing and some needs for certain services within the communities. This really will act as the city's guiding roadmap over the next twenty years. You will be seeing a lot of items related to the implementation of this plan. And so will all your predecessors until twenty forty five, until we had to write a new plan, um, Lord willing. So this plan is a really, I think, a comprehensive overview of what the city wants to do. I want to thank everybody who had a play in getting it to this point. But ultimately it's ready for the city council to review that plan, which you've received a copy of and adopt the ordinance if you so choose. Uh, both myself and Emily are ready for any questions you may have about the contents of the plan. Otherwise, feel free to vote disgust and move ahead.
You can tell by reading the plan how in-depth and how much time and effort was put into creating that plan. And I think it's wonderful that it is so specific going forward. And like you say, a roadmap for the future, so. Just wanted to throw that out there.
One was important also that, well, this is a comprehensive plan. Plans are made to be able to be changed. So if there's something that comes up, changes the way that we are interested in doing something or uh, arranging the priorities that, uh, just is something that we have available to do it to. And I I noticed a couple of little things that, because I read through all two hundred and some pages. Yeah. A couple of little things, but nothing, you know, nothing important that tripped my trailer, just more or less, uh, type of things. But you know, we started, you gotta start somewhere and I think this was a good start, so.
There's an important section in there that allows for amendment and management of the, the plan, which is a critical piece because it's twenty years. Um, the other reason that's important is the, the Plan Commission in discussions said, this is something we need to be looking at and using. And maybe reviewing what's in there every year and as a goal to make sure that those things are still valid or are there new things that should be addressed as well? So the amendment and managed portion is a critical piece. I would move to approve ordinance uh, twenty dash twenty twenty five, approving the twenty forty five comprehensive plan.
I'll second that motion.
Motion's made and seconded to approve ordinance twenty twenty five. Uh, is there any further discussion?
I guess my, my only question is this, this is always a working document, right? So it can be adjusted as we go. In fact, it
It should be.
Should be, yeah, okay.
And by future councils, future staff, it's intended to be a guiding thirty thousand foot view. Obviously, the implementation, how we go about it is all for the council and councils to determine. So this is not set in stone. It is not the law of the land, but it is a useful tool and a guide. These are our priorities. This is where we want to go. All right, let's do it.
Like Eric said, reviewing it, see if we're still on track every year. I think that's critical to, to look at, you know, to stay with the plan going forward, so.
But modify it, so it is.
Exactly.
Yeah.
Maintain relevance.
You know, I, I totally agree and I think not only just say we should do it, let's commit to it.
Yes.
Yeah, I don't know how long any of you folks been on the council, but I can't recall us talking about the old one even one time, so.
And that's a problem.
Yeah, it was a problem, so.
Be a living, breathing document.
Yes.
And referred to frequently.
I think this one is good too, because it's taken a year to get this, you know, done. So it's, uh, it's not something that was slapped together and here, vote on it and then throw it back in the drawer someplace, so. Motion was made and seconded. All favored by roll call.
Yes.
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 If I could, I'd vote yes too. Uh, motion passes unanimously. Okay, item number six, resolution ten, twenty twenty five, resolution approving the co- city of Amory comprehensive outdoor rec plan.
So in conjunction with the comprehensive plan, we've also been developing a comprehensive outdoor recreation plan. That too is hopefully going to cross the finish line. This plan really highlights the condition of the Amory Parks System uh, and recreational opportunities within the city that has a series of rec- uh, recommendations for work to be done to both maintain and improve our existing park infrastructure and look for projects down the line. Um, kind of a little bit of an update for some system recommendations and for some specific parks, uh, programs that we will be looking to implement, um, some of these things in the next year. And then some of these things larger off such as a North Park reconstruction, uh, currently slated for twenty twenty nine. Again, knock on wood and cross your fingers. Uh, this plan will really help enable the city to maintain its vision for what our park system and our outdoor utilization will be in the future, making sure that we're distributing resources and budgeting appropriately to get our parks where we want them to be. Uh, the city has eighteen parks and we would like to keep them all as expand and wonderful as we can while making improvements where needed. Um, this plan will also enable the application of certain grant opportunities in um, specifically the Knoll, this Wisconsin stewardship, I think it's the Knowles Nelson uh, grant, which can cover a large chunk of that aforementioned North Park redevelopment or any other park major work we want to do, you know, million dollar plus. So this grant, this plan will really help us activate, uh, sources of revenue to help improve the park system outside of what the city can do on our own. And it gives us that barometer or that living, breathing document of what we want our park system to be now and in the future. Um, same with the comp, both myself and Emily are available if there's any questions, comments or concerns about anything contained therein.
I just want to say I'm really glad and happy that we did this and that the effort went into it. I think that it was something that kind of badly needed to be updated and kind of inventoried. And, um, you know, it makes me happy that moving forward, we have a plan uh, to do things instead of, you know, trying to figure things out on the fly, so.
Well, the ability to apply for and hopefully receive great opportunities now that we have this if, if it's adopted, and I certainly hope that it is because that is something that we sorely need is some updates in several of the parks, so.
Yeah, and it does, it highlights something that everybody kind of knows, but doesn't really know, and that's how many parks we have.
Right.
And how much they get used and how much, um, some of them aren't as well known as they should be and could be. And that's part of the implementation of this plan is making those things much better known and much more accessible. So having this as a document that the Parks Recreation Group can continue to work with means a lot to this community.
That accessibility piece is so huge. It's one thing to talk on and knowledge. Uh, it's one thing to talk about a major reconstruction at North Park to address the playground, flooding, et cetera, et cetera. But even having things like widening the apron for the turn into York Park to make it more inviting to people. Where they know they have this beautiful gem of a, of a park on Pike Lake in naturalized forest. It's just there, how you, people don't know about it. So highlighting the, uh, the gems of the system that we have is really spectacular.
Yes.
Is there a motion?
Wouldn't make a motion, no. Adopt. It's an outdoor recreation plan.
The second that.
Motion's made and seconded to adopt, uh, resolution ten, twenty twenty five, approving the city of Amory comprehensive outdoor rec plan. Is there any further discussion? Comments? All favors signified by roll call.
Yes.
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 Unanimously approved. Item number seven, council comments.
I have one comment to announce. We're having the annual, um, Amory Lions Club calendar. That is, um, going, it's been going and going on for several, several years. It's out for it's twenty dollars a calendar. Uh, there's drawings every day. The drawings are, um, drawn at Chat Pharmacy. Every day, excuse me, every three days is, they've changed it. Originally it was every day with a smaller amount, a smaller payout. Now it's just three times a week with a larger payout. And if anybody is interested in buying a calendar, I have some calendars. I believe Roger may have some too, and any of the other Lions numbers in the community.
It's a paid political announcement.
Uh, it stays within the city of Amory. It goes to the um, scholarships for the high school.
Lions have been instrumental
Yes.
Supporting our parks and.
I just say one thing I forgot. Speaking of parks, parks bathrooms are shut down. Everybody knows that and the dump is closed for the season. We're still having the dump open during the week. Somebody needs to get in, they can just call the city shop and we'll let it in. But everything's shut, you know, it's winter time now.
I had someone call me up and say, I think it should be open because those aren't all off the tree. Huh?
But every fifteen minutes, there's a lot of leads up there.
The council comments?
I've got one. I just, I really enjoyed hearing how, um, in this case, the police department is, is really, I think, forward thinking, using the latest technology and, and what they're doing. And I think that's, that's what we need to do to be efficient going forward. And, uh, so, um, and I know others are uh, as well, but we wanna, we wanna always leverage technology to our advantage.
You guys just stop and kind of show you how it works and that, so. It's really easy to pull up on our system just to show you what it's, what it's doing and how it actually, so.
Do a demo at some point.
Wow, I just, I just appreciate it, so.
Fran?
Um, I just wanted to say, as you could all see, um, if you get the free press in the paper this week about the increased demand at our local, uh, Amory Food Pantry. And so I just want to say, if you were able to help and you can help, um, please do, because, um, there certainly is, is a need.
Nobody else? Just two cents worth in, you know, our fire, our fire contracts are being negotiated. Of note, a couple of the townships surround, or that either surround or border us or have that question on their agendas. I think Lincoln's is the twelfth of this month. Not sure when Blackbrook's is. But pardon? Okay, I know they have talked about it. So I would encourage all of you that live in Lincoln Township or Blackbrook Township to make sure you attend your township meetings as that's discussed. It's, it's definitely something that needs to be a majority that make the decision since it does affect costs and lots of other things. And so just part of good government is good governed, if you will. And so you need to be aware if you live out in the townships to make your feelings known. Hey, either way, so not, I'm not putting a plug in for anything, just good governance, all right? Need a motion going to close session, Wisconsin statute nineteen point eight five, parent one, parent C, to consider employment promotion, compensation or performance evaluation data of any public employer over which the governmental body has jurisdiction or exercises responsibility. And this is WRS compensation for a police department employee. Move to go into close.
Second.
Motion to go into close session in favor of by roll call?
Duncanson?
Yes.
And Summer?
Yes.
Yes.
And Mark?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
Tanner?
Yes.
Thank you. The rest of you are excused. This is all except for you.
I made a motion, will you adjourn?
Second to adjourn.